Good morning and welcome to the September 3rd Jackson City Council Meeting. Before we begin, I want to call up... I want to call up Jamal Brady, founder of the Better Balanced Sports Club. He has with him the Super Bowl winners, five and six-year-old Steelers, six-to-eight-year-old Steelers, and nine-to-twelve-year-old Colts. So, let's come up and recognize them for the hard work they've done. No, I saw parents and coaches coming here too. Because I know one thing, coaching ball is not just the kids' sport, the parents are involved in this.
They've got to get there.
And they've got to have the equipment and everything. So, the Super Bowl champs, congratulations guys. I'm going to give you just a small token of our appreciation to the city of Jackson. This is a pin you can wear on your collar, on your shirt, it has a city of Jackson seal on it. Don't throw it on the ground now.
Today I'm just following John Dodd, he wanted to bring the kids down. I definitely appreciate that, bringing the kids down. We had ninety kids in our program this summer, played football. We had eight from five to twelve. We had three divisions. Of course, not all of them were in school then, so the ones that made it. Definitely want to thank the parents, they came out every practice. They volunteered, coaches showed up, we practiced three days a week. It was a hot summer. Played out at Jackson Christian School. Definitely want to thank them, even Chief Wilder sent out some people that are curious, fully detailed, and thank him also. That's really, they have a vision to, you know, start young in the city. We all know kind of, you know, what's going on in the city. I played a part of some of these things that were on in the city. So, I just try to go back and pay. I can't pay back but pay full, just search the youth and try to, you know, read some of the things that we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. So, that's who I am, that's what I've dedicated my life, my mission to, is for the youth. This is a very, very special day to me, just to... I left my job this year and I had a vision, God gave me the vision, I wrote it down, and just to see it come to fruition is really nothing short of a blessing, and then just the resources and people he places in my life. I definitely appreciate all of them, so that's my speech.
If I could just take a minute, just tell Jamal, thank you for all you're doing. Jamal made a big difference in our community. He's doing football, basketball, workout, you name it, speaking, going around the school, speaking to our kids. This is our future, and we have to invest back into our future. So, anytime y'all see Jamal do anything, please support him 100 percent because he's, like I said, he was once doing things he shouldn't have been done, but he's changed his life and he's giving back. Regardless of your past, your future has a clean slate, so we want to thank him for all he's doing in our community. And by the way, thank you, Mayor.
All right, now I'm going to call on Councilman Dodd again to lead our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we're committed to that, Lord, just say thank you for today, Lord. Oh, yes, just give us the right mind, Lord, to make the right decision for our great city, Lord. Lord, please watch over this city, Lord. Just protect us and give us guidance so we may to work with our kids. Also, Lord, to make our community a better place. Always touch this council, Lord, if we try to make the great decision, the right decision, to make this city a better place. Lord, protect our mayor and his family, also touching each and everyone in this room today, Lord. We're all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is roll call, and I need, I think you can mark all members present this morning. Item four is approval of minutes of the August 6, 2019 council meeting. Council got emailed and presented a copy of that. There'll be no additions or corrections, the meeting, the minutes will be approved as read. Item five, no proclamations today. Item six is invitation for public comment. If anyone here has a comment under first reading, raise your hand and you'll be recognized at that time. Item seven is first reading. Number one is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 1132 Rushmead Road from RG1, General Residential District, to SC1 Planned Unit Commercial Development District comprising of .40 acres, submitted by Gary Taylor.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request in your packet. This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending approval of it to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, since item on first reading, I will open the public comment. Is anyone here in favor of or in opposition to the item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, council discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is passes eight in favor, one abstaining.
Item two is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at the northeast corner of East Orleans and Hurt Street from RG2, General Residential District, to IO, Wholesale and Warehouse District comprising of .56 acres, submitted by Ronnie Hicks.
Again, you have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. Mr. Hicks owns property adjoining this to the east, on, that fronts on North Royal. He is asking to consolidate his property under one zoning class, which is IO. This was presented to the Planning Commission, and they are recommending approval of it to you.
Any questions from council? All right, item on first reading, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone in favor of or in opposition to, please raise your hand. Hearing none, close the public hearing, and do I have a motion?
Move their adoption.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second, are there any questions? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located on Van Drive at Rushmead Road from RG1, General Residential District, to SC1 Planned Unit Commercial Development District comprising of .70 acres, submitted by the staff.
Again, this is a part of your package. You see that we staff initiated this. If you look on the map, you'll see an RG1 zoning that's kind of hung out there in right of way. We're just cleaning that up based on the zoning that's in the area and the zoning you saw on the previous track. We're just getting all that under SC1, and the Planning Commission is recommending approval of it to you.
So move.
All right, before we get the motion, open up for public hearing. Anyone in favor of, opposition to? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Now I got a motion. Councilman Cisco, second from Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
All right, item four is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located between Dr. Effie Wright Drive, Watson Road, and US Highway 70 East from I-1 Planned Industrial Park District to SC1 Planned Unit Commercial Development District comprising of 360.5 acres, submitted by staff.
This area is located within the Tiger Jones Industrial Park, and we have tried for a few years now to attract industrial uses to this area. But over time, we've seen this area kind of change and become more commercialized, and the area where our sportsplex is, and also where the stadium is, with ballpark, they're all under SC1. So, we're just basically consolidating our zoning under one class. We feel like we'll be able to market this property better and have more flexibility with it being SC1. So, again, this was presented to the Planning Commission, and they are recommending approval of it to you.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Good morning, this is Pallett.
Good morning.
This is a very large, 360 acres, and as you stated, under commercial development, you had no progress whatsoever.
Under industrial?
Yeah.
No, not really, and again, this track is large, but there are some areas because of grades and different things that, you know, we have, there's probably a, you know, two or three good building sites within that area, even though it's a large track.
With respect to attracting Planned Unit Commercial Development, do we have any potential entity?
We've had some interest, but again, nothing concrete, but again, as, you know, you can look at it chicken and egg, but usually when we're marketing tracks to people that are interested, it's a plus if you already have the zoning in place, so that's what we're trying to do. The interest we're getting now is, seems to be more in the SC1 area than the industrial.
Thank you.
Stan, and in the event, say, an industrial group wanted to establish a manufacturing facility on this property, what would our process look like then? Would we merely reverse?
We'd just go back through the zoning process and revert it back to industrial.
Any other questions? All right, this is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public comment. Anyone in favor of or opposition to? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Make the motion, so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item eight, second readings. Consideration of an ordinance to annex and three ordinances to zone an area referred to as Summit, generally described as being located along 4300 block of US 45 North, north of Jack Exum Road comprising of 95.5 acres. The proposed zonings for this annexation area are B5 Highway Business District, RS1, PRDFH, Single Family Residential Plan Residential Development FH District.
You did approve that on first reading.
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property at 1694 Hollywood Drive from OR Office Residential District to OC Office Center District comprising of 2.8 acres, more or less.
So move.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is a consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Cooper Anderson Road located at the northeast corner of Cooper Anderson Road and University Parkway.
So move, second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four, consideration of an ordinance to amend the official code of the city of Jackson Title 12 Building Utility Et Cetera Codes relative to vacant buildings.
And Mayor, I will state here, we made some revisions between the first reading and now. We did give you a memo on those. Again, they were clarification revisions to, one, to clarify that multifamily, triplex and above is considered commercial buildings. There was also some clarity on the definition of vacant, how much percentage of a building could be when it's classified as vacant. There was also a requirement about placards for the fire department, and we felt like, in talking with the fire department and looking at the signage that would be there, that that would not be something we'd want to do. So, we have taken out the parts on placards. We've also clarified some language in the exemption for actively marketing. So, again, your memo outlines those changes, and we would ask that you approve it with the revisions.
Any questions from council?
Mayor, if I may, and if it's appropriate, I'd like to call on Vincent Seiler, who has prepared an address for the council in opposition to this.
He and Mr. Seiler had an opportunity on first reading for public comment, this is the second reading.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with six members in favor, two, one voting abstaining, I'm sorry, and two voting no.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Item nine is new business. Number one, our new business, a consideration of a resolution to revise the city of Jackson debt management policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I actually have four, the next four resolutions are all in support and related to our goal of completing a successful bond transaction sometime in the next 45 days or so to the benefit of the city. The first resolution for your consideration has to do with our debt management policy. This is a policy that I understand was first adopted back in 2011. It was amended in two ways in 2017, but we failed to actually update the policy. So, a couple of these items are kind of housekeeping in nature, and then there is one new addition to the policy, which is on the screen now, related to balloon indebtedness. And this was in response to our approval that was granted by the State Comptroller's Office related to the potential public-private partnership to build a new high school for Matt, a new building for Madison High School. And what this basically says in a nutshell is that any time we, the city were to entertain any kind of balloon indebtedness, it would require the approval of the comptroller's office, and second, that it be in the best interest of the city of Jackson, and third is that the period should not exceed an eight-year period, nor create long-term debt over 30 years, beyond 30 years. The second revision to, this is actually the housekeeping portion. These two changes were actually approved by the council back in 2017.
Can you zoom that in so we can?
Yeah, okay. As I mentioned, these were actually approved by the council back in 2017, but were never incorporated into the policy itself. This has to do with variable rate debt. As you know, the city has issued variable rate debt through the years. The policy used to have a maximum level of variable rate debt. That was removed by the council back in 2017 and was replaced with some language recommended by the comptroller's office. And basically what this says is, is in the future, when the city evaluates variable rate debt, that the city will also look at its cash balances and how those are invested. In essence, what that means is, if you, from a financial standpoint, if you have a portion of your cash reserves invested in the stock market or something with, that's subject to market sensitivity, then it may make more sense for you to take on variable rate debt because they sort of hedge against each other versus if you do not. But again, this was approved by the council back in 2017, we're just incorporating it into the policy at this time. And then the next one has to do with the total debt, and this is measured by the percent of our debt service as a percentage of our property tax revenues. That percentage used to be 23 percent, but it was increased to 26 percent back in 2017. So, we're just incorporating that into the policy, and we're in compliance with that requirement now, so. Any questions?
When it refers to public safety emergencies, public health or public safety emergencies, has that ever been applicable for us in the past?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question relative to some of the changes, specifically on the balloon indebtedness as we move forward and know that that is coming. Relative to the criteria on B, what do you, what are we defining as the best interest of the city?
Put that back up.
Do you see where I am?
I do, yeah. The transaction cost savings are in the best interest of citizens of the city of Jackson. That would be determined by the council and their vote, so.
And that's a, as we know, a subjective determination. What's in the best interest could be different for all of us up here.
This language is drafted under the guidance of the comptroller's office, so it's pretty much the language that they recommended when they approved that potential program.
Okay. And I guess my last question is, would this preclude us from entering any type of deal similar to this in the future?
No.
This language?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion will you approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two is a consideration of a resolution authorizing Mayor and city officials to proceed with plans regarding funding and improvement bonds to refinance certain outstanding indebtedness and finance new capital expenditures.
Thank you, Mayor. The next three resolutions are a little bit more specifically related to the goal of completing a bond transaction to the benefit of the city. This resolution here is an authorizing resolution only that authorizes the city to move forward with diligence work that's required over the next 30 days or so to completely define the bond transaction. Again, to refresh your memory, what we're hoping to do is to identify current debt that can be refinanced or refunded at a lower cost, generating a cash savings to the city. We also hope to, or we will be evaluating the possible conversion of some of the city's variable rate debt to fixed rate debt. Currently, fixed rate financing would be at historic lows, and it may actually make sense to convert some of the variable rate debt to fixed rate debt, thereby eliminating that interest rate risk at some point in the future when interest rates start to increase possibly. Another component of this transaction would be to possibly restructure our existing debt service. As I think most of the council members understand, beginning this year and for the next four years, we've had a, an increase in our required debt service up above 10, 10 and a half million dollars a year, and there may be an opportunity to level that out a little bit and give us a little bit relief the next four or five years. And the final piece of this bond transaction would be a new debt issue in an amount not to exceed actually 6.2 million dollars. I do want to call your attention in the last sentence of that first paragraph where it notes that we hope to issue new debt to net 6 million dollars, but also to include the issue cost related to that debt. I think originally there was some discussion related to an amount not to exceed 6 million dollars, and we hope to net out of that the issue cost. However, I think we're going to need to net 6 million dollars to fund our capital budget. So, this resolution does a couple of other things besides authorizing the work over the next 30 or 40 days to accomplish this, but it confirms our decision to use Glankler Brown from Memphis, Tennessee as our bond counsel and a PFM financial advisor as our municipal advisors on this issue.
I have a question. Are those professional services included in the total request?
Yes, they would be, as described in the first paragraph there, right.
And do we have estimate, guessment, whatever you want to call it, as to what we could save on our current debt service with this refinancing?
Well, there have been some estimates provided over the last 90 days or so. That is certainly market sensitive to the time that the debt would be issued, and these were not, these estimates were just that, they were pro forma estimates, and it obviously depends on how much of our existing debt we choose to refund. The numbers that I saw ranged from around 1.8 to 2.4, 2.5 million, but that could certainly be more or less depending on how much debt we refund and current rates at the time that we issue the bonds.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, in essence, we have to watch our checking balance with refunding very carefully.
That's correct.
Yes.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three, our new business is a consideration of initial resolution determining to issue not to exceed 6,200,000 dollars of general obligation bonds of the city of Jackson, Tennessee.
Thank you. In the state of Tennessee, when a municipality issues new general obligation bonds, new debt, the comptroller's office has laid out some very specific steps and requirements that you have to go through. I don't want to create any confusion. This is the same 6 million dollars that we just talked about in the authorizing resolution. However, one of the rules that the comptroller's office has is they require a separate, what they refer to as an initial resolution. And here you can see that we're talking about issuing not to exceed 6.2 million dollars. That would include the issue cost as well as the bond proceeds.
That's the answer to my question, right?
Yes.
All right, any discussion? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you. The final resolution, and this is pretty straightforward here, this is what's referred to as a reimbursement resolution, and in essence, what this does, if you adopt this today, and we were to move forward and complete the bond issue, we may incur certain capital costs between now and the time that the bond issue is actually, comes to fruition, and this reimbursement resolution would facilitate us reimbursing ourselves for any capital expenditures that qualify that we might incur between now and the time the bonds are actually issued. And there's a 60-day look-back window, so from today back 60 days, we could reimburse ourselves from any qualifying capital investment that we make.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask this question with respect to this. If we pass this today, when can we get started on some of these projects and purchases?
I was going to speak to that. Would you like for me to address that now? Sure. So, assuming- So assuming that all of these resolutions are passed today, the timeline moving forward would be the following. We would have a very busy month of September. We need to have a little luck and everything line up with the people we're partnering with, because what would happen during the month of September is we would actually finalize the particulars about the plan of finance. And I guess what I mean by that would be things such as, here is the existing debt that we plan to refinance or refund. Here would be any changes in the current debt structure that we might like to make as far as extending or leveling out some of our debt service. Another example might be if we choose to convert some of our variable rate to fixed debt. There are many particulars about the bond issue itself that have to be determined. The denomination of the bonds, how many bonds we issue, the series, the yield, the coupon rates. There's a lot that has to be determined. But we would do that in the next, during the month of September. And we would prepare a proposal that we would put out to the market. This transaction would be advertised on some national websites, likely be advertised in the Wall Street Journal, the Bond Buyer publication, et cetera. And so the sale would be a competitive sale on this. And what we would hope to do would be to bring to this meeting, I think it's October first, the details to some of the good questions you all have asked this morning about what the expected savings would be, et cetera. And we'd be looking for your final approval at the October first meeting to move forward. We would hope then to be able to, depending on the market conditions, we would hope to be able to go to market to complete the sale. Optimistically speaking, in mid-October, on the outside, maybe toward the end of October. So hopefully sometime during the month of October, we would complete the transaction. We would have access to our new money and begin to realize the savings from the transaction from that point forward.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, with respect to the street resurfacing, because we know that North Row is so lumpy and bumpy, it's a disgrace to the city, along with Forest Avenue. And I'm asking our, Mr. Chandler, your department, will we have time for street resurfacing this year?
There will be, there'll be some street resurfacing, although it's contingent on cash flow right now.
Okay.
And so I've asked, our engineering department has done a great job over the last several months of prioritizing all of our streets from one being the greatest need to ten being recently resurfaced. And so our plan for resurfacing is for the next four years to tackle twenty-five percent of those priority one and two streets. And Mr. Chandler is working on that list for this year and also at the same time working on the next three years list so we can know when those streets will be resurfaced. Some of our smaller residential streets will be able to be done in this calendar year. Some of our larger projects will have to start once the asphalt plants open back up in the spring.
When can we expect those lists, Mayor?
I would say this year's list will be ready in about, I would say, three to four weeks.
Okay.
And then following that, we're going to roll right into running the second year, third year, fourth year list together. The the first year's list, we'll not only compile the list, but be estimating the quantities and preparing a bid set so that we're ready to go in the spring with all of the first year's streets. And then, like I said, the rest will just be lists that you can expect over the next, the following three years.
And Mayor, I know what would be helpful to me and possibly other council people is to see that list of the one, two.
Yeah, we'll have that, we'll have all this provided and broken down, council districts as well.
That breakdown.
We're also going to be meeting with JEA this week because we we basically do what we would, prepare what we would like to pave. And then sometimes they would follow up and say, hey, we need to work on this sewer line or this water line. And so we may delay a year to let them come in and do their rehab work and work together on that.
You'll let us know that as well?
Yes, sir.
Uh huh, well, thank you. Mayor, I did have a couple of questions for Mr. Arnold relative to what we're discussing. And you said there are many determinations to be made. Who would be making those determinations? I assume that's going to be the administration out of the mayor's office, correct?
Well, we'll be working in conjunction with the municipal advisor, PFM. That's basically what their role is to make recommendations, right?
With their recommendations.
That's correct.
And all of that information will come back to council for vote.
It will. We will bring back to the council in October a resolution that lays out all the details and particulars related to the transaction.
And and as we sit today, that's a not to exceed six point two million, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Councilman Brooks also, you've all been given the itemized capital expenditure list. That list will be voted on, provided you all approve everything at the November council meeting. So once we have the money in the capital budget, we can amend the budget and then approve the items at the November meeting as well.
Okay. And Mayor, I think you had noted that 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 will be an amendment as opposed to?
Be amendment to the current capital budget, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so the item it has, the resolution declaring the official intent for reimbursement of certain capital expenditures. Any further discussion on that? Is there a motion?
Moved to adopt a resolution.
You have a motion? Second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Item five under new business is a consideration of a recommendation for engineering services for the plans preparation of an industrial access road to be constructed by TDOT for Highway two twenty-three east side.
In Susan's absence, I was basically going to cover this item. As I mentioned in agenda review, this is the engineering services to go along with a, two grants that the chamber initially applied for and that we received. One from EDC, the site development grant, and then also an invest grant through TBA. Both of those are funded through those sources. I mentioned to you that the the split's a little complicated because one grant can support the other. One's a seventy-thirty, the other one's a fifty-fifty. But we'll be working those to our advantage to have the most match available through those funds. This overall contract is five hundred and five hundred thirty-eight thousand nine oh two oh six. That's a not to exceed figure based on the estimates that we've got. And it's looking like with working those splits, the city funds out on this contract would be around a hundred and eighty thousand.
Any questions for Mr. Chandler?
Moved to ward the contract till I am.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item six is consideration for approval of change order number four for additional capital for the construction of the new city court.
Not really prepared to cover that, so I'm not sure.
You can chime in too, also, Councilman Taylor.
So the two, the request for the two hundred and twenty thousand relates to underbudgeted line items to complete city court. It was my understanding that certain items were removed to get it under the approved amount of two point six million for the building. Right now, we need two hundred and twenty to finish the parking lot, some landscaping, and some other miscellaneous items that are inside that were removed through value engineering.
Any questions on the proposal?
And I think just to clarify in the meeting we had, we talked about the work. Some of us on the council, this had come before, numbers had been presented. And so voting on this again, we feel as best to our ability confident that this is kind of what it will take to complete the project.
Yeah, so we've gone through the practice of rebudgeting the project. We found some missing, some dollars that that needed to be made up to make the project whole and complete it and have it operational. I've spoken with the architects for the project and with the general contractor, and they've gone back and added back in some of the work that was originally taken out to get it under the approved number.
All right, any questions? Is there a motion?
I have a quick question for me. Councilman Taylor, when you when you talk about underbudgeted, who who underbudgeted that? Did we underbudget? Did the city?
Yes, so so the, yeah, to to speak to your point. So this is going to facilitate a new operation, new way we budget projects through this. But it's my understanding that the city would remove certain items that they thought they could take on and use other city resources to accomplish the task. Effectively, we're still using money to accomplish the task. So the the goal now is to move all that where where when we see a project on paper, we understand that 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 dollar sign is associated with the completion of the project.
Councilman, to further answer your question, future projects relative to everything will be included in the price, whether we use internal staffing and resources or bid everything out, that'll all be included in the total price. It won't be a part of the picture, it'll be the whole picture of every project we present going forward.
Okay, I I see in an effort to come under budget, we said that we could do some of that work as a city. And going forward, that's not going to happen, or we're just going to look at it differently?
We'll look at it differently. If it does happen, first off, we'll work with the department heads. If they have the the resources, the time, the manpower to do so, we'll work with them, and that'll be included in the budget. So the council will be aware of what actually is being spent as far as hard costs and resources from within the city. In the past, it's been just presented for a budget for the hard costs of it without the city resources included. So if we do use engineering or parks or landscaping for something else, it will be included in the budget, and the council will be made aware of it beforehand.
Would that be included in their individual operational budgets?
It's what it has been in the past.
Yeah, sometimes it is, sometimes it hadn't been. So we want to clean up and make sure that when we approve three point seven five million dollars for street resurfacing, those monies are going towards street resurfacing and aren't being used to build parking lots and special projects.
And I think that ultimately we could be reimbursed for those.
Yeah, and and that's the, that's the, that's the system that we're going to set up within ourselves to be able to reimburse certain departments for those expenses.
We were just a little too late on this project.
Yeah, on a couple of these.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote. Item seven is consideration of a resolution to support an application to the Tennessee Department of Transportation for a transportation alternatives grant for a downtown improvement project.
Okay, basically, this is a, an opportunity we'd like to go after with the state. It is a competitive grant, but we feel like that we can, we consider this the phase one of airways, even though it's technically Main and Lafayette in this first phase. In your packet was the, basically the schematic of what we intend to do. We basically want to work from downtown to the Y intersection at King Tire in the Jackson Sun area and work on that, improving that alignment to that intersection, and then back toward town, installing sidewalks and redoing the street there. It's the the funding for this project, I had mentioned the other night, it's around a, close to three million dollar project. We're hoping to utilize both the TA award and STBG dollars that the city gets annually, bringing our match to be a seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. Also mentioned that this project is turning in for an application of one point eight million. That's a little on the high end for what's traditionally awarded. We're reaching out to TDOT to see if they're comfortable with that. They may ask us to bring it down a couple hundred thousand into an award range that they're more comfortable with, and we'll we'll be going through that. But that would ultimately lower our match as well. So you're kind of looking at a worst case there if we if we get this award. But any award that we can help start working on airways, I think, is a good thing to do.
Scott, can you discuss the timeline for the grant and the award and process?
The submittal date is in October, October third or fifth, I believe. Following your approval today, we'll advertise for a public meeting to, for this application. So we'll have some public comment available about the project. And then we'll find out if we're awarded the project in August of next year.
Scott, I think you'd mentioned in our agenda review meeting that if if we're awarded this, that's when kind of we push forward in funding. And then it'll be, our match will be budgeted into the following fiscal year.
Right, the, if we get the award in August, we'll be one month, you know, past our budgeting cycle. We'll probably bring that before you then as a, on the next item to fund. The first portion would be the engineering design of it, which is estimated at two hundred and twenty-two thousand. That will, that should be all the funding we need for that budget year. And then following that budget year, we'll we'll program for the construction match.
Scott, in looking at this phase one, are you actually rerouting Lafayette Street into?
We are. It comes down at a at a bad angle. A lot of people are looking back over their shoulder. This would tee that into Main Street Airways.
Right. Is that going to require any signalization there, or is it just going to be?
We're discussing, we're discussing the signal. Obviously, the one, the intersection now is not signalized, but the intersection at Riverside is.
Right.
And we'll do a study to see if if we need to maybe signalize the new intersection versus keeping the other one and, you know, to better set that up.
Okay.
They they both won't be signalized. They'd be too close to have their signal.
Does this take into consideration the the green, the trail coming up from Bemis?
We intend for it to. We've discussed that. And it's kind of open-ended right now. There's not any specifics as to what will be required there. But we do know that that's, you know, that's the trailhead. And we intend on kind of working that into the plan.
Okay. Any further questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Thank you.
All right, item eight is a consideration of a resolution to approve consolidated annual performance and evaluation report two thousand eighteen nineteen.
Good morning.
Okay. The CAPER is our annual report of accomplishments that we're required to submit to HUD each year ninety days after the end of our fiscal year, which was June thirtieth. So we have to get this to HUD by September thirtieth. As per our citizen participation process, we did hold a public meeting, held a thirty day, excuse me, a fifteen day public review period, as well as presented our CAPER to the Jackson Housing Authorities Board for approval. For the year, we committed a total of nine hundred thirteen thousand six hundred eighty dollars in community development block grant and home grant funds. Of that, we expended five hundred forty-one thousand five hundred eighty dollars in the CDBG funds for housing repair, public service activities, and the section one oh eight loan repayment. Two hundred fourteen thousand eighty-three dollars in home funds was expended for housing activities. With these expended funds, we provided one thousand seven hundred eighty-two low-income persons through public service activities, excuse me, public service activities, and twenty-one housing units with acquisition, housing rehab, and or accessibility modifications. Any questions on our CAPER?
Good morning, I have just a few, if you don't mind. In in what you do and your expertise, are CDB, CDBG and home funds decreasing or increasing?
They decreased this year, yeah, this year, about $15,000 each. It kind of fluctuates. One year, we may get $15,000 more. Then like this year, we got $15,000 less. But the reason this year was because HUD added some cities. So, you know, the funding did not increase or decrease nationwide, but because HUD added cities, we got a smaller cut.
Okay. What's been the trend over just the last several years?
As far as funding?
Yes.
It's pretty much remained stable. Like I say, we may get $15,000 increase, $30,000 increase, then the next year, we go back down $30,000. But when I started working here in like 2000, we received about $900,000 in CDVG funds. Now we receive $500,000.
She was 10 when she started.
Yeah.
I wish.
And the follow-up is, how has that affected our ability to provide low-income housing here in the city? That's the most important piece.
It has really affected it because, again, when I started working here, we were able to do new construction. We were able to go into a block and do new construction or reconstruction for clients. But now, we can only do housing repair. And with like the CDVG funds, we may get 15 done per year.
And does that affect the number of Section 8 homes that are available in any way? Or is that a whole separate piece?
That's separate. No.
Oh, that's not separate? Section 8 is separate. Okay, then. And just quickly, relative to that housing stock, has that increased or decreased? What's the availability for Section 8 houses? That's a Mark question.
You might come on up here.
Okay, so that's what affects the CDVG and the home funds is on the public side, not the private side of Section 8. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay. Any other questions?
Move to adopt a resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote. All right. Item 9 is a consideration of a resolution to approve the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice.
Okay. As an entitlement city and a recipient of those CDVG and home funds, we are required by HUD to prepare and update every five years or so the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. Now, what that is, the purpose of the analysis of impediments is to identify practices or conditions that are hindering housing opportunities for residents because of their race, disability, religion, and other protected classes. So the AI basically gathers community data, demographics, and input from the community, and reviews this information, provides an outline of possible impediments or obstacles to fair housing for the citizens of Jackson. It also describes for us goals and action steps that we might take over the next few years to help remove these identified impediments. Now, I had the complete AI email to you all a few weeks ago, so that if you wanted to review it prior to now, that you could, because I only provided a summary in your packet. So in the packet, you have a list of the 10 impediments identified, as well as some possible action steps and an estimated timeline. And I'd be happy to go over any of that with you if you'd like, or any questions you might have.
Is there an action step for each impediment in your report here?
Yes. Yes, there are two or three or more for each impediment.
I see.
And those action steps is not necessarily just the community development office. It's the city, basically, coming together, partnering to try to remove the impediments.
So are you asking us to approve these action steps?
The full AI.
I get you.
Yes.
I have a question. Currently, what type of credit counseling resources do you have available? Because I did a little hard time in the mortgage world. And that was frequently a stumbling block for many people.
Yeah, and it still is. And that's something that, I know that the Housing Authority, through their FSS program, does have those types of financial fitness classes and things for their clients. But as far as citywide, it's very minimal. And so that's something that we do want to try to get.
Okay. And what would that look like if we were to improve it, just in your mind?
Credit counseling, I think it would help as far as one of the impediments, predatory lending, better housing choice, when people are educated and can get and know their credit worthiness.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how many of these 10 impediments have carried over from study to study?
Most of these are the same from the last study.
Okay.
I'm not very sure of the ones before that, because the one previously before the 2012 or 2013 was probably the 90s, I think.
Okay.
But then HUD came in and said, you've got to do this every five years or so, so.
I move the approval.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel, please vote. Before we adjourn, I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize State Senator Ed Jackson being here, for attending today. Nothing else coming for the council? Means adjourned.